Good afternoon, everybody. We've called the mid-month meeting of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Mr. Brown, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir, it has.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we will ask our good friend, Mr. Joe Moser, to leave us once again on invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Please stand for those two items.
Ms. Prey? Gracious and kind, Father, we thank you for another beautiful day. We thank you for your boundless blessings. We thank you, Father God, for watching over our soldiers as they deploy. We pray you continue to be with them and strengthen them. We pray for families that are going through, Father, various sicknesses and diseases. Pray to be with them. We lift up our employees, Father God, who are going through. And tonight, Father God, we pause and pray that you would give this deliberative body the wisdom and insight they need as they deliberate the business of this community. This we thank you for, and we graciously pray to you for, for us in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna move right along.
Mr. Chairman, before we go out, just say something before we get started, if it's okay. I just want to thank Commissioner Stevens for the dedication of the park down in Brabbay the other day. I mean, things went well. It was a good turnout. You know, Mr. Reliff was a friend of mine, a friend of Baltimore. It's well deserved, and I just wanted to just mention that for the record. And I've been introduced a lot of times, but I've never been introduced as a man who I don't see eye to eye with. When Commissioner Stevens called me up, he said, "Next is a man that I don't see eye to eye with, Commissioner Gilchrist." So when I got up there and stood beside him, I said, "Well, you know, that's why we don't, 'cause I'm a foot taller."
And he called up and pointed my ball at you.
Yeah. It was a great ceremony, Commissioner Stevens, and like I said, it was well deserved. And the family, I talked with a bunch of them afterwards, and it was great. So, you know, thanks for your foresight.
Thank you, sir. While we're doing announcements, I'll send it out to you, but I had the opportunity a week and a half ago to go to the, I think it was Jepson, J-E-P-S-O-N Museum in Savannah. I was invited. They have a display there by Henry O. Golden, spelled both ways, G-O-L-D-I-N-G-A-N-E. And he was the son of William Golden that started Darchester. And he, I'm gonna go into all the story, but he was an artist. And they've made a big thing about this guy from Liberty County who's an artist, who has all his artwork. He was a sailor, so he did a lot of maritime artwork, but it's a beautiful display in Savannah. And it just made me, Liberty County, proud to be there and hear them talk about Liberty County and Darchester and Midway Church and all that kind of stuff with this gentleman who's from Liberty County who heard of the daddy but had not heard of the son. But this is the son of the gentleman who helped start the Darchester Academy. So, once again, I'm Liberty County proud moment with that artwork that's in Savannah. It's in the Jepson that's on New York Street in Savannah, not far from the civvets. If you get a chance between now, I think sometime mid-August, please go by and see that exhibit.
What's his name, the guy's name?
William O. Golden.
O. Golden.
His daddy's name was William A. Golden.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Liberty County, I know, I was, you know, Bill Austin mentioned to me that they were trying to find information on the father, but I didn't know that the son was so renowned for his artwork. But like I said, I won't take that and go into this whole story, but I'll email the brochure from the museum to everybody, but it's worth going and seeing. It'll make you, this won't make you proud, nothing else. We have a great history here that's still being unfolded every day, every day.
All right, Ms. Kim?
We actually have two reports. I can start with the March report. And at the end of March, we collected 88% of our budgeted revenues, and we exhausted about 69% of our budgeted expenditures. At the end of March, we had 7.6 months' worth of operational expenditures in our undesignated, unreserved fund balance. This time last year, in March of last year, we were at 7.7, so still very close to where we were last year. Department-wise, there were still a few departments that were showing a little bit of variance, and some of those actually came off by the time we got to April. Finance was still skewed a little bit because of the $61,000 audit invoice that we had to pay. Your attorney fees are running ahead of schedule. That's just because of the amount of bills. So, we do anticipate that that, by the end of the year, they may be over budget. Your general admin fees, of course, we pay those once a year, and it skewed it. Judicial administration is your court reporters. They too may run out of money by the end of the year. Superior Court, that budget skewed, but I believe it comes back in line in April. Bureau of Standards continues to run over in several line items. This was the department you told me, Mr. Chairman, to get with the chief deputy, and I did. We went over some things, and he does not want to change anything at the moment. He recognizes that there are savings in other departments that will cover it, so they were not interested in changing any of their budgets right now. EMS is running over budget in several line items because we did not have a decent budget for them. The coroner, I need to come and bring you a budget amendment, actually, for the coroner's budget because of the unbudgeted purchase that we did for the vehicles for him and his chief deputy. And then debt service, that relates to the enterprise lease agreement that we did not originally budget as well. Solid Waste, at the end of March, has a small net income of about $367,000. Their departments are all operating within budget except for the solid waste collection that's running slightly ahead of schedule, not a lot, but that's attributable to general supplies and material and fuel, both of which have increased over this past year. But I don't expect them to exceed their budget. They're just running slightly ahead. All of your other special revenue funds, 911, victim witness, child support, records service, all operating within their budget. Sales tax continues to look really well. In March, we actually received a distribution of $968,000. So, to date, we are a little over $4 million ahead of schedule.
Wow.
So, it looks like, you know, so far, instead of collecting 54, we might end up collecting 58, 59. Looking very good. TAVT, the same way. Collections are running very well, and as a matter of fact, we are about $123,000 ahead of schedule on TAVT, which is a shorter-term program. So, doing very well. Anybody has anything, any questions on March, or do you want me to go on to April and then...
Let me ask a question, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
You may, sir.
Now, the, as far as Clinton's department, Kim, how is that, where's that listed at in your...
That's 4220.
4220, is it...
So, it's on the second page of these. It's in the general fund.
All right, let me find it in a minute. Second page, 4220.
Correct. He's got a total budget of $1.7 million. And as of the end of March, he has spent $1.1 million. He's operating within his budget.
Roadways and walkways?
I see 422...
4220, roadways and walkways. Is that what you're looking at?
Right. And I mean, that's what we're covering under Clinton's...
In the general fund. $1,757,000, is that where you're...
Yeah, but I mean, what I'm looking at here is Bureau of Standards, that comes under the sheriff's department?
That's correct.
Well, why would I'm, what I'm looking at is why would it be holding a spot of its own? Why ain't it under the sheriff's department?
The sheriff has multiple departments.
Yeah. I understand that, but it's actually underneath the sheriff's department, right? Bureau of Standards.
So, yeah, they have sheriff's department, Bureau of Standards.
So, Clinton's is maintenance, I mean, roadways and walkways, but does it show anything else underneath his department? I mean, like grading, dirt hauling.
That's all he wants. He doesn't have multiple departments. He has one department. The sheriff has multiple departments.
The grading and all would be under that department. That's what that budget is for all this grading activity. Under that maintenance.
Chairman, that was, you finished that?
Yeah, I was just...
No, that was my question on that Bureau of Standards. Now, when they, and I remember when, I think it was chief deputy, Mr. Brown, came in and he, they were kind of like reorganizing or reallocating and even giving names that we've never seen before, and that was one of them.
Uh-huh.
And when they did that, they funded also with that, you know, so that being that that's what that budget was for that particular department or that particular line item. And it said that it was skewed, where's the note, skewed because of...
Technical services and other equipment that relates to the purchase of body cameras, in-car cameras, Bluetooth integration, and Novatime software.
Because, I mean, but you don't know if that was because of the cost of those, that equipment, or the cost of the supplies jumped up like everything else in America has, or that when they put that together that they didn't...
Probably a combination of both.
Okay.
Probably a combination of both. And that was one of the things we talked about when he came to sit down, and we went over all of the budgets, the sheriff, Bureau of Professional Standards, Bureau of Police Services, Bureau of Jail Administration. You know, we looked at all of it and, you know, recognized that, yeah, probably should have budgeted a little different, didn't know how it was gonna be, but at this point right now, they did not want to change anything.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Kim, so what we talked about the other day, about purchasing some of this stuff out of this year's budget, does it look like it's going to happen?
No.
With them...
We have some savings in other areas that, once you look at the list that we recommend, if you say yes, go ahead, then I would reach back out to any department, to include the sheriff's department, to say, "Hey, we have some savings. Please go ahead and try and purchase X, Y, Z," and then we would move that money into their budget for that purchase.
I mean, why, since you had the conversation with them, I mean, why are they so hesitant to, I mean...
I didn't go into, I wasn't gonna push it.
Trying to get some understanding, clarification.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I think, looking at all of my fellow commissioners' faces, I think we all looking for some type of clarification on the reason and why.
I can send an email.
What's your...
I was just, you know...
Yeah.
It was discussed that we would revisit again, maybe in June or something to see.
Okay.
It was.
You know?
All right.
Yeah.
Because in total, total, he still has it.
He still has it.
Right, right, right.
You know, whether we move it from one department, you know, $3,300, and we move some money out of that and into $3,320, he's still covered.
Right.
You know?
Kim's conversation with him was kind of alert, alert, alert.
Yep.
All right, I understand, but I mean, that's something that, you know, we've been doing for a while, so, I mean, why not just make those particular departments whole where they should be instead of... I understand. All right.
I'll pick my battles. That wasn't one of them.
I got you.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question on the coroner. We purchased two vehicles?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Were those the leased?
No.
He purchased them?
They were purchased outright.
They're gonna be under the lease program, though. They're gonna go under as trade-ins on the enterprise?
In a few years, when they reach like the optimum trade-in period, they would be rotated into that. But we purchased those two outright.
Right.
And they weren't in the previous budget?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And we got two instead of one? Okay.
That's correct.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions on March, I'll move on to April. Okay. Oops. And we just, we just finished this today, and I just didn't want to put this off until next month. I was trying to get us back on track. So, I apologize, you just received this today, but this is when we finished it. So, at the end of April, we have actually achieved 91% of our revenues, and we are at about 77% of our budgeted expenditure, so looking real good. At the end of April, we have seven months' worth of operations in our undesignated, unreserved fund balance. This year, this time last year, we were at 7.4 months, so little lower, somewhat expected because we have a bigger budget. The departments that are still showing a slight variance, as I mentioned, your law department, that's where all your charges for legal services are paid out of any legal service, whether it's operational personnel, there's multiple attorneys that get charged there. So, at the end of April, they've spent $104,000. We only had $125,000, so it is possible that they may run out of money. We'll continue to monitor that. Your other line item, as I mentioned, judicial administration, that's your court reporters. They are gearing up more and more court cases now, so it is very possible that that particular line item may run over as well. They were only budgeted 105, and they've already spent 100. So, I anticipate that budget running over as well. Your Bureau of Standards, again, it will continue to show up until such time that they move some money around. And again, for the same thing, the technical services and your other equipment that I mentioned in March. Same thing for EMS. We will need to go ahead and move some money in that. And honestly, I haven't sat down with Mr. Brown to go over the EMS budget. I did alert him to that. He's aware of that, and we talked about moving some of the savings that we do have to cover that and make that whole. Coroner and debt services, so those same things that were on your March report are again on your April report for the very same reasons.
Ms. Kim?
Ms. Jim?
Yes, sir.
What's all included in, I know I should notice that, what's all included in the debt service?
Debt service is your enterprise lease payments and the interest payment on your fire station loan that was not originally budgeted in Splosh or anywhere else.
Yeah, the Island's, the Island's Fire Station.
The one that was already built, the one that we took out the loan?
Oh, that you issued.
Mm-hmm. And then when they issue the new bond, the debt service, you'll have a debt service that shows on the bonds.
So, our station on 84 at Miller Park will be, we're hoping not a sales tax?
Hoping not a sales tax, right? We got it proposed, the payments for six years on the list for you to look at tonight.
Is it, I mean, it's gotta be voted on next year?
This year, November.
So, if it goes belly up?
It'll be made out of the general fund, yeah.
We'll have it in the general fund?
No, I don't think, did you put in this budget?
Any debt service for the general fund? No, we would have to amend our general...
Well, because actually, actually, the first payment on that won't be due. It'll be a construction loan-type loan in the bond setup, and so you won't actually make your payments on that. You may have one in the second or third quarter of this fiscal year coming up.
Well, I don't know how we'll prioritize. I know we talked about the road department, that's gonna be some sales tax, but if it fails, then the only thing in there, and the reason I brought up the Bureau of Standards, that's $3 million, it's gonna be a year to fund it, and that's every dime got to come out of the general fund. Now, I mean, I understand it's under the, you know, the sheriff's, but when you start looking at all these things, it's under some of the constitutional officers, and you don't get them, I mean, I hope there's some dialogue going in there. Look, guys, if this thing goes belly up, and it can, I mean, we're looking at what the economy is. We know what it is out here with the new growth in the county, but this is gonna be a real touch-and-go situation between now and the end of the year. Very, very, I mean, look, you see what the stock market doing, Dow, NASDAQ. I mean, I just, I don't want it to be gloom and doom, but I can tell you, you start taking $3 million more dollars and forming a unit.
Well, so, don't hold me to these exact numbers. So, when they came in, they basically took the budgets of the sheriff that already existed...
Reshuffled.
Reshuffled that same money, so the 3.2 is not new money. Now, since that time, the budgets have increased, so I wouldn't lead you to say it's the same apple for apple, but basically, they took the same budgets and just called them different things. It wasn't, it wasn't $3 million.
Their total allotment did not change.
Well, so you got...
Restriction.
We approved seven deputies the other night, right?
No, we haven't approved anything yet.
No, proposed with a new budget, right, right.
Right. And we're new, what are we looking at there with vehicles and employees? I mean, it's gonna be, any way we look at it, I'm just wanting everybody, and I mean, I know the board has looked at it, but this is, this is a sales tax issue. Now, I think it's a fair tax, but, you know, we're gonna have to be prudent with some of this stuff. That's all I got. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
For expressing my concern.
So, continuing on, Solid Waste has a small net income of $248,000 at the end of April, and they actually, again, solid waste collection, running ahead of schedule because of equipment, maintenance repairs, general supplies, and fuel. We did have to purchase a significant amount of dumpsters and then repair to the compactor and the purchase of eight cubic yard dumpsters. So, there are some expenses that we've incurred that it's skewed their budget a little bit, but we're continuing to monitor it. I don't think they'll run out of money, but they're just running slightly ahead of schedule.
Does Solid Waste need its own CIP, too? Do they need their own?
They have their own.
Yes, they do?
Yes, they have their own CIP.
So, the dumpsters were part of, they were in the CIP?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Good job, then.
Yes. All of your other special revenues still operating within their budget. Your 911, your victim witness, child support, records center. And sales tax, six in April, did even better than March. We received $1.1 million significant. So, now, at the end of April, we're $4.4 million ahead of schedule. We continue, like I said, we'll probably end up, instead of $54 million, somewhere around between $58 and $60 million, hopefully, if the economy stays, the sales tax stays at the level that it is for another year, because we've got another year.
And just for clarification, I apologize, Ms. Chair.
All right.
Just for clarification, for, I guess, for the viewers and everyone, to let them know that that extra is just broken down by percentage throughout...
Correct. So, anything extra that comes, the county doesn't take it.
Right.
It gets distributed on a pro-rata share based on the original percentage that that project took up in that $54 million.
Right.
That's part of our...
You know, governmental agreement?
Yes.
Right.
With the municipality, so everybody, everybody gets a share in the extra proceeds, so...
Right. And at the, at the end of April, your TSPLOST is about $295,000 ahead of schedule, so looking good on both of those ends. Anyone have any questions about April?
Done. All right, thank you, Kim.
All right, thank you.
I know we've been talking to you in a little while. That was just a warm-up.
Don't get too comfy.
All right, Mr. Long?
It must be hot outside. It's not a tie in the house.
Yeah, I don't think his air conditioner's working.
That was 90 something...
I hear it making noise, but it's not cool.
It's good.
Yeah, make it a little cooler, gentlemen? Of course, you're gonna, then you're gonna freeze.
That's real good.
I just thought about it.
We're fine over here.
Right, we're fine over here.
I was gonna freeze Marion out.
I just thought about it.
We're gonna be going home shortly, ain't we?
There you go. I like that.
I'm gonna try to combine a couple of things, the first groups on here. We have some meetings with the DOT next week regarding some of our projects on, as far as our roadways go. What we're in the process of doing is kind of pulling together the Island's highway safety improvements, the bridge over I-95, the corridor improvements along 84 and Midway, and several of these other little projects and making some composite sketches so that when we talk to DOT, they can see how they all interact with each other and the funding that we need for each one of those. So, we've kind of got those, we're almost finished with those. I'm gonna meet with Mr. Brown tomorrow afternoon, kind of finalize all of our documents for what we're looking at as far as our meetings go.
Did Senator Warnock's staff member, does she get what she needed from us?
She's actually coming back next week.
Okay, all right. We trying to work every angle that we can, y'all.
Both definitely. Trayport West EMS building is coming along. We're working on some dirt issues with the foundation, getting that resolved. The, some of the ongoing construction projects, the pavement marking thing that we've got out, the contract documents are back. We got those executed by the chairman yesterday or sometime this week.
Yes, sir.
Billy Davis is supposed to become a bid, assign his portion of it, and we're gonna be having the pre-construction conference on that pretty shortly so that can get going. Miller Park Fire Station, the notice proceed date on that is May 23rd. Miller Park Recreation Improvements are finally starting to do some work. We got, not all the structures are here yet, but they are, they have enough that they're building and they're working. Now, I was informed that the Precast company that makes all the structures, they, because of the shortage in aggregate, they've only been able to pour structures two days a week instead of five to seven days.
Wow.
Just backing everybody up. Same ways, same thing's happening with pipe, stuff like that. So, they're moving along with it. They did ask for a time extension for 90 days to cover the loss of time due to materials, so in the process of processing that pay request, that change. The Gun Branch Convenience Center, we did have pre-construction conference on it. We established the notice proceed date as July 25th, but we did that so that we didn't run into some of the same scenarios we're running into with Miller Park as far as time extensions because of the delivery of materials. So, materials are already ordered for it, but we're delaying the start for a little bit so, until the materials do show up.
Commissioner Fraser had a question.
I guess just because of the environment with construction, I've noticed, and I guess everyone else has as well, noticed that this is starting to become a norm with construction projects and giving extensions because of materials. So, is that something that we need to start considering in our, in our contracts, or just keep it as it is and just, and just go back in and change orders?
This is something that I run into, not just with Liberty County, we've run in...
Everywhere.
Everywhere.
Right, yeah, I get it.
All of our things, and talking to other engineering firms that are doing the same thing that we're doing, we're all kind of trying to feel our way in the best way to handle the time extensions. Several of them are doing, just like what we're doing with Miller Park is, we're just standing on top of the contractor. We know when things are coming, we know it's not their fault, and we're giving time extensions for the project as we go. There are others where we are delaying the start because we know we have materials and go ahead and let them order the materials early. I have a little bit of, I'm kind of a little quasi not liking that because I'm telling them to order materials, but I hadn't told them to start. So, I've told them to spend money, but I hadn't given them authority to spend money. If that makes sense. So, you know, you've got some twists and turns that are going on that way. And there are others that are just putting very long times on their contracts. So, you're doing a whole bunch of different things, and I think each contract has to be looked at on the merits of its own, the components, as to what's gonna be in it, as to how long materials are gonna be here, and what it's gonna take to do. materials are gonna be here and what it's gonna take to do the job. So I don't, I don't think we're gonna figure out that new number for a couple more years.
I was gonna ask you what the timeline was on, couple, I wouldn't expect a couple more years.
Yeah, it's not gonna fix it, so.
You've got some major projects until?
We have a, a water well project for, uh, City Midway. My delivery time on my switchgear, which is electrical equipment and my generator, it's twelve months delivery time. So, you know, what do I do?
In a couple of years back.
For a ninety-eight day contract.
Right. In a couple of years, uh, prior, what would be the delivery time on that?
We did a, a well, a little bit bigger well than that, in the City of Jessup, uh, in two thousand nineteen. My switchgear was delivered in eight weeks, and my generator was delivered in, it was like nine or ten weeks. But I mean, we're talking like big generators, like big as your counter.
Right.
Generator.
Right.
So, yeah, it, it, gone from two to three months to a year.
It depends on the size of things too. The, for instance, a generator on EMS project is, is probably less than six months.
Okay.
It's easier to get that size, so it just, it just depends.
And, and, and we're verifying that that's the, the issue with.
Yes.
With the material, right?
The labor is too much. Almost favor not putting any kind of language about extensions in the contract unless approved, and then you can wait. For instance, on the Hanger Project, when they wanted a time extension, we got something from the supplier that said it is going to be this long.
Right.
Since you place an order, and in fact, there was a, a cost element involved too. We said, that's fine, we're not gonna prove any cost changes. When it's delivered, you get a final invoice, we get documentation on the red iron cost from the plan it was made at, we'll weigh all that, we'll let you know. You just get the stuff coming. You know, that way, it takes a little more documentation on our side to prove it, but then it's not just a blank slate here, you know?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're trying to make sure everybody gives proof of why they're doing what they're doing.
Okay. So is it, I'm trying to, do I recall the conversation about the, um, old Liberty Gym and not having any, any bidders, because a lot of the contractors are so busy. So is, so the two factors we're dealing with, them being just busy and supply and demand?
Material costs not really a part of that.
Yeah.
Labor shortage.
Yeah, but I mean, so we got that to deal with, and we got the.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Labor shortage from the move to more of a residential market.
Yeah.
When the commercial slowed down, everybody went to residential construction subs, and they haven't migrated back to commercial. Not as many. You had contractors that closed.
Is that two years too, sir?
Man, I'm not sure. That could last a long.
Get that back.
They already got ready on the residential side.
They, they ride in that wave.
Yeah, that's really gonna be market driven, so it could take longer. I don't have a good crystal ball on that, but yeah, that's, yeah, we're, we're gonna be dealing with this for a little while.
And, uh, the residential is very lucrative for them, so I don't see them walking away from that.
They'll probably be working over in Bryan County on that big plant from Korea. They probably ain't gonna be worried about laying tile down here for Liberty County. Putting up a little red iron.
Yeah.
Alright, and the Gum Branch, so we already talked about that we did delivery, uh, the date on it. Uh, water system improvements are moving along well. Uh, other than that, I don't have anything else to really, uh, I do, I do have two things. One, I owe you Mary Todd Road estimate.
Right.
And two, you and I need to get out to Homestown and look at that road.
Yeah, track lane, and, um, I, I've replied, and this week here coming up, if you can, I, I shouldn't have to go nowhere during the week, so just give me a call and we'll, we'll meet down there. If, if, any day this week should be good, um, the twenty-sixth, I got a morning meeting, but I'm, I'm good every day, um, next week here in town. Uh, and also Trent, um, the, the Deal Street, I did reply back to, I mean, you gave the estimate for Deal Street, and I appreciate that, and it included curb and gutter, and I say, well, you know, give us one without it. That's just a, off of, not deals, Lori Smiley, off of, off a deal?
Hundred-nine thousand dollars.
Uh, difference?
No, that's how much it was total.
With, with the curb and gutter?
Without.
Without? Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't think you ever replied. I mean, that's fine, 'cause I.
Yeah, I, I, I'll send that, I'll make sure I send that, 'cause I have a feeling that Keith sent it to me and then I didn't hit.
Yeah, yeah, just, just send that to me, 'cause I, I think it's, it's only one or two houses down there. Um, the road does need to be, um, resurfaced, so we may just go with resurfacing. I'll check with the city to see if, um, if they got any plans to put curb and gutter on Deal, you know, but, um, but just to have that little short strip with curb and gutter and everything else, all other streets all the way up to South Main don't have it.
Now, last time I talked to Paul, I don't think he had anything set up on Smiley.
Okay.
I'll double check with him.
Just, just forward that to him, so I'll take a look at him, we'll let you know. Okay.
Yeah, and I, I'm sorry that I didn't.
No, no, ain't no problem.
I had Keith fix that for me and looked at the number, and I think I just never hit send button, do you?
Okay.
I'll adjust for that.
Good, okay.
I got a question I asked after. I forgot to ask you, on the Dorchester Village Road, is that gonna be open ditches or curb and gutter?
Right now, we haven't talked about typical section on that. Um, our standards are for curb and gutter, and I will, I will start with curb and gutter.
Okay.
Because I really don't want to have to, there's a lot of sandy soil out there, and I don't really want to have to deal with erosion and all that comes with that.
Right, that's what I'm thinking about. Uh, also, I don't see anything in there here about the Trade Hill Project.
Yeah, those, uh, boxes are not here yet. Um, I did not check on those this week, but I will check on those first thing tomorrow.
Okay.
And let you know.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I did something I don't want to do, is I started with a clean slate this time instead of copying the last month, so a couple of these things fell off.
Jim Wallen, you had it?
Yeah, I, I was gonna ask Trent, um, your, your fourth item here on your report says cattle hammock arena pier?
Yeah, then the last one, say it again.
And then the last one, you ain't charging us Christ for that, are you?
No, no.
Okay, I just like to watch it dollar, 'cause it's not in my district. It's in Marion's district.
Marion, you done created.
Occasionally, I have to go down there.
That'll be a splosh.
So I, I tell you how that.
Hey, I'm gonna make y'all expect.
Yeah, we can, we can, we'll do whatever you want us to do.
I'll tell you how that happens. I'm sitting here typing along, and then, you know, somebody comes in, hey, Trent, what about this? Keep typing, and you go back, Trent, what about this? And by the time you get to the end, just like, I don't know, what'd you say about the pier? And you do it again.
That can be fixed, that little type in there, but when we start looking at numbers, that's where it really gets to be.
You don't get one that's double bill.
Our numbers are, are in good shape right there. I.
Yes, sir.
I just was wondering, we've already, uh, got in the septic system at Middle Park? Or that's?
Yes, yes, we did change order to that end.
And that's already this tank?
No, 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 it's not in. We haven't moved all that dirt yet, but we have the price to do that.
Okay, and I see the prices here, and it's basically gonna be over, when you're looking at it from eighty-four, it's still gonna be on the right hand side? Where the, um...
I think we have it inside, it's a little further back, uh, near the basketball courts in that area. Yeah, there's an old thing that's along the edge.
Right.
We have this new one that's in a different location. I'll send you a copy of the plan so you can see.
I saw it, I just wanted to make sure that was it, that was in there, and, um, on Tyson Road, I noticed your group's out there doing some surveying?
Yes, sir, we, we done surveying that, so for the, uh, water system extensions, um, west of the railroad tracks, we're hitting all the areas that we showed in, uh, that drawing that we were doing extending water systems, so that's all we're doing.
Is that gonna be, how, how wide is that right away, sixty foot?
Uh, let me look at that. I, I don't want to try to quote that off the top of my head.
Okay.
So, but what we do is, we do look at what rightaways are, 'cause I certainly don't want to put a water line not on our property.
Well, I just saw them down in there, I just wanted to ask the question. That's all I got, and I'll leave you alone.
No, you're good.
Educate me, um, the subject of curb and gutter, when is, is that budget based, or that's, is that recommended based on certain type of roadways, or how do you determine?
So in our subdivision rules, we require, our typical section for our roadways, we call for, where it's curb and gutter.
Okay.
Uh, you can either have stand-up or rollover type. We have variations in types of curb and gutter. Um, that is more from the regulatory side on our side, so that we don't have to, uh, deal with a lot of roadside ditches and some of the things come along with it now. There is a, a mode of thinking, uh, in the clean water mode, you want to have more roadside ditches, and you want to have swales, and you want that water to be going through some grass instead of just, you know, hitting the, the curb and gutter, getting in and getting out fast.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it, it's the way we're set up for maintenance right now, uh, it's better for us as county to have it go to curb and gutter and go right in, you know, go out and have it going to our ponds and accomplish that stormwater quality in a different way.
Yeah.
Well, what, your question there, I guess you're looking at the Dorchester Road, Mr. Chairman, is that the one you?
Well, whatever road you mentioned a few minutes ago, and I thought, how do, how do we determine when we do and when we don't? You're right, that's a sandy road, that's a, there's no doubt about it's a sandy road.
But if, if it's a, um, like a, a subdivision.
It's automatic.
Yeah, the curb and gutter goes, but, but like, uh, Dorchester Village Road, it, it is dirt, and if, um, and I know that, that development that's coming, they were gonna, the developer was gonna do something with the road down, um, so many, or half, whatever the distance was. So that would be a dirt road that's getting a road improvement. The road improvement would include curb and gutter, or can you just do open ditches on a, on a road improvement like that outside of, because that's not a subdivision?
Well, what we do is, we default to our, um, standard rules and standard conditions for roadways, so we'll start off with curb and gutter now.
And, and the one.
You guys do have the authority to waive the requirement for curb and gutter if there's an argument for doing.
Open ditches.
Uh, roadside ditches. We do, we have done several roads in our neighborhoods, and some of these new roads we've done, uh, we've done with roadside ditches.
But like over there on, um, Smiley, that I was talking about, off a deal, that's open ditches, it's an existing, uh, asphalt road, you could resurface that and don't have to add curb and gutter to that.
So the, the City of Heinzel's standards, reason I gave it to you with, uh, curb and gutter, and curb and gutter, City of Heinzel has a policy that if you make an improvement to a roadway, that you've got to bring it up to the, uh, city standard.
Okay, so which is curb and gutter?
Roadside, uh, curb and gutter sidewalks and the whole nine yards. As a matter of fact, is if a commercial development is developed on a roadway that has roadside ditches, you've got to put curb and gutter on that section of road beside your commercial development.
So Commissioner Fraser could not resurface McDowell Road unless he put curb and gutter?
No, you can resurface it.
Well, that's what I was saying about.
You can resurface.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, it depends on, and it, Smiley Road, one of the problems with it is it's narrow.
Right.
And, you know, we start widening it, you know, and it compounds.
Okay.
Well, that, that particular road was put in by a family. That's one reason why I was talking to Commissioner Gilligan about making sure we had clear deed to it, because I know Mr. Young, Ms. Young actually gave that property, you know.
I did not know that.
Yeah, that was been some years ago, back when, I don't know, probably sixties, but, uh, on the thing that the chairman was talking about on Dorchester Road, now, I thought that was gonna be an, a road abandonment, because they're gonna move it over, so what part are you talking about?
The new, the new section of the road.
The new section from the cul-de-sac on toward?
Dorchester Village Road.
Island's Highway.
The what?
Island's Highway.
Island's Highway.
Highway.
So, you know, right now, when you come off of, uh, Island's Highway onto Dorchester Village Road, you go straight and you go along around a long curve. About the time you get to the end of that long curve is where it will take off and then be rerouted back to Island's Highway. So that whole new section will be paved, and then it'll go back to the same, you know, it, no improvements we made to Dorchester Village Road south, or actually, in this case, east of the improvements for the.
I didn't understand that that night. I understood the gentleman to say that when it left Island's Highway, that he was gonna move the road over.
Yes.
Put a cul-de-sac in it, and that a way the traffic that was gonna go on down Dorchester Road would have an outlet.
Yes.
But now, the property between the new road and the Jones property.
Gets abandoned.
That gets abandoned, the dirt portion of it. So what participation do we have in the new road coming off of Island's Highway? I mean, it should.
He, he does, he does.
Right, we got it.
Cost for us. They just have to build it to our standard.
Right.
Because it's gonna become a county road when we're finished, when they're finished.
Yeah, he's doing that.
They're paying for everything.
Yeah, they're paying for everything. And the cul-de-sac that you're talking about is, he's gonna have a turnaround.
Right.
Trucks.
So that trucks don't inadvertently start going down that dirt road.
So that area right there will have a couple of hundred feet of pipe to, I mean, the way that water's gonna run, it's gonna have to come back toward.
Yes.
When you go in it, it'll have to go back to your right.
Yes, sir. What'll end up happening is, they're gonna have to have a series of stormwater retention facilities, and I'm not gonna just say ponds, there's gonna be facilities, 'cause there's gonna be more than just ponds. They're gonna have to do some cleaning and
Right.
Some treating of that water, you know, not mechanical treating of that water, but there're gonna be some things they gotta do to make sure that water's clean.
Well, well, we beat them rocks to death. I just remember that it was something we had, I, I wanna make sure that we didn't have but very much skin in that game.
No, we don't have any skin.
Our skin in the game is making sure that they build it to our standards.
Yep.
That we, their stormwater.
That's your skin in the game.
That's my skin in the game. And I'm not designing it, I'm reviewing it. Okay.
Alright, sir.
Thanks, Trent.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I appreciate everything.
Yes, sir.
You're excused.
Alright, administration.
I'll be real quick, Ms. Chairman. Um, we expect that in June, your polycard analysis will be finished, uh, wrapping that up. So in, either in your first or second meeting in June, I expect Mr. Culbertson to, to have his report for you on his findings for, which I'll ask him to do, so a real quick update on that. Um, we are also gonna try to wrap up the applications for the ARPA second round, I say second round, with educational, uh, applications, uh, working on that. Uh, County Wild Planning Workshop, I think Maria may have sent you some stuff on that.
She did.
Twenty-second, twenty-third, um, needs to know, definitely, if you're gonna have anybody attend with you for the, for the dinner that night, and, and really, if you're gonna go, we need to lock in the room no later than August first. So she'll be, she'll be coming behind me, um, touching base with you on that, just to make sure. Uh, project wise, we have relet the, uh, Sam B. Harris Gym Project. Uh, that new proposal date that they're opening is June twenty-third, it's on the street now, uh, which is great. So again, unfortunately, we didn't have any takers on that the first time. We have had indication that some have freed up jobs now.
Mm-hmm.
And are available, so that's the reason we're putting it out in kind of a hurry. Uh, Mr. McCall, working on that road department design, of course, that's, you know, that start date and let date's contingent on the EMS building getting finished and us being able to, you know, move them out and do demolition over there. Um, Tea Hanger Expansion Project Airport wrapping up, it'll wrap up, uh, really by the end of this month, so the management board is authorizing leases to begin as early as July first, and just as a reminder, it's already fully leased. In fact, it's leased plus. Uh, there's a waiting list after the lease, so also gonna be installing some tie-downs out there that had to be removed as part of that project, uh, very little cost to do that, and then we'll be leasing tie-down space again. So, uh, that's, that's a very good project to do. Uh, Head Start Building, tentatively scheduled for ribbon cutting in June. I want to get an update on that, but they were fixing to do the paving down there, so that project will wrap up, and when we solidify that ribbon cutting date, we'll get everybody a notice on that. Trent mentioned water system, what we're calling Water System West, Water System East. Uh, he's finishing up the, uh, trying to do the construction drawings on the east side. You're gonna have, actually have the developer for the large subdivision project that'll come before you in July for rezoning, uh, for that home project over there, and we're trying to get that section in so we can serve those residents' water. We need, we need subscriptions, uh, on our water service. Uh, he is also reviewing the Louis Fraser Road Design that was done originally by Matthew Barrow, to get that out too at the same time. Uh, we have gone ahead and, in the Georgia Grants Portal, loaded everything we need to, it's being reviewed now, so hopefully we'll be ready to go once, once he gets the design finished and we get that submitted to EPD. Gunbridge Convenience Center, uh, obviously authorized, uh, under construction, he mentioned that also. And then we continue to work with GDOT, he mentioned a GDOT meeting we've got with GDOT District Rep here on Monday, and we'll be reviewing the Highway seventeen, uh, Louis Fraser projects, Barrington Ferry one nineteen projects, uh, and talking about freight connector projects some more. Also letting her know about, uh, the Island's Highway and eighty-four improvement projects down around Exit seventy-six, uh, with bridge projects. So we'll be reviewing all the projects, heavy projects that we want GDOT to have a hand.
You said her, but you didn't say who her was, Joey, so.
Yeah, Ms. Ann Purcell.
Yeah.
That's, uh, on the transportation board, State Transportation Board.
When you say this is?
This Monday.
This Monday coming?
Yes, sir, we're meeting with her.
Who all is invited to that?
Really the chairman and myself and Ms. Purcell and Mr. Long.
The reason why I'm asking, cause everything you're talking about is in that end of the county where I represent.
Right. Maybe we can get the chairman to talk further about that.
Uh-huh.
Maybe we can have a conversation about that.
I suppose Al's supposed to be there too.
But you understand what I'm saying, Mr. Chairman, you got all of this activity going on down there, and you know what, I'm, I'm getting it secondhand or none at, you know, secondhand more or less.
Oh, you, you'll get it, you'll get it. We're just trying to open some doors for some help.
Go open.
Yeah.
So we're working on those, also on the Exit seventy-six bridge improvements, the EG Miles, uh, median project that's got authorized under T-Splash, there's a safety study, you know, that goes all the way from, uh, General Scriven all the way out to Airport Road now as part of that. So, uh, that he should be complete, uh, really in summer, if, if I remember right on that project. That's LCPC's actually running that project out of there. I think that's really all I have, unless you're questions, I know we wanna focus on the splash.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
We, we met with the, we met with the cities, um, and I guess just as a starting point, this is part of an old original list that you saw projected for a six-year program, you see the start and end date on that. The projects that were on an original sheet that you looked at, uh, are still up there. So the chairman might wanna comment on those, that those are the heavy lift projects, uh, they've had really, just a lot, we did put six years of debt service in there in case of tax, hopefully it's gonna get renewed, but if it's not renewed after this tax, we would have an extra year, uh, that we were in limbo before that we could pay those. So, uh, I guess to run through it real quick, you see the debt service on Justice Center Midcoast, that, that is what it is, we have to make those payments, that's no new debt, that's to pay off existing debt, um, for, for six years, and you see the note on the Justice Center, it will be paid off, uh, in, in that six-year program, uh, there. Public safety is to be able to fund those capital items that came before you, which is the, uh, extension of the nine-one-one building for the battery storage areas and equipment storage areas, uh, some renovations at the EMA section over there, as well as, uh, EMS administrative building, that's part of that, all that rolled together. Recreation, two and a half million, um, kinda speaks for themselves. The, the six years of debt service, uh, again, is what it is, you've authorized that also, that's for the EMS station, uh, to be done and the fire station down there. Historical, cultural, see the amount, starting amount is there, again, you're gonna be talking about all these numbers. That is anticipated six-year debt service on the Health Department, although we haven't issued the debt service for that, obviously you hadn't even done the design on that building yet, but it, it's got a placeholder in there, that obviously would not pay off that building in six years. Industrial Authority had eight hundred last time, as a starting point, eight hundred was back in here this time, drainage, uh, one point five, uh, the ambulances, because the cost increased those a little bit, uh, in this next offering. As we did the county and Hinesville Safety Vehicles and Equipment, um, they had one point five, I believe, last time.
Million each.
Or a million each, and so those are proposed to be increased to three million each, and then allotments to those agencies midway in Walterville that also have police agencies, uh, for money, their allotment was actually less than that last year too. It's based on the, really the number of cars that we anticipate being able to buy, so with the cost of the cars going up in order to get those same units, that's the reason those amounts are increased. Uh, the freight connector improvements, those are, not to be confused with the freight connector itself, that's the money, a, a little bit more money for downtown Walterville area for streetscape, uh, on the old, uh, one nineteen sector that'll be abandoned, starting at Bakington Church and call, coming all the way to eighty-four, make those street improvements so it discourages the, the trucks from, from coming through there. Liberty Regional Medical Center had a holding place last time, I understand they needed some equipment, we hadn't gotten official, uh, letter from them, but in, in conversations with, with the chairman of the, uh, hospital, uh, he indicated that. The public works facility, now you see, uh, anticipated six years of debt service there. By the way, we did go back and make the change in the drawings, uh, to give Mr. Wells ample parking down there, uh, to do that, in concrete fashion, uh, by the way, so he's happy with that. Other thing that was in there, uh, million dollars for events center, I think y'all talked about that the other night, the city had requested some money to finish the Ryan Avenue Main Street Improvement Project, there was a little bit of that forecast, and the last one, as you remember, and from, from what we understand, that project now will continue up to tie into Main Street with, with a roundabout there. Uh, there is, you know, when we sat over there the other night, we basically were taking these projects and then trying to balance out, so there, when we got down to the bottom line, there wasn't anything to allocate for a corner facility on there, uh, but again, that's something you may wanna do. Program management, uh, basically a percentage, uh, associated with sixty-nine million to be collected. And then what you see at the bottom is, is the fallout money. And so just as a reminder, as you saw most of those projects at the top, were what we wanna call tier-one projects, those monies are mainly going to county projects, uh, as you can see, uh, with the exception of Ryan Avenue and the police vehicles. Any other projects that the city wants to do, and Kim, now that I look at this, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay, I, I, I didn't see the fire station on there, the fire station two point eight up there, but other, you know, I think they've got the fire station holding up there, the Ryan Avenue they're proposing up there, the expansion to the public works facility they're proposing up there. Other than that, any other things they wanna do, or the other cities wanna do, will come from the money at the bottom, basically. So once we took those projects, uh, the sixteen point seven oh nine up there, it basically left the money at the bottom to fall out. Those percentages at the bottom that you see on the left side are the new percentages for census splits inside of, uh, the county from the twenty-twenty census count. Last time that this was split, the remaining funds at the bottom, was, was a, a little bit of a hybrid of that, it started as a census count, so it was actually the percentages that end up, ended up being used for LCPC distribution for some reason, but these are census count splits. The current, what Kim's done is she's taken the current sales tax six that you get there for the percentages, and she has shown the percentages, uh, or the amount of money actually that, that each got in the sales tax six. And also as a reminder, your road monies, other than for your road projects that are at top, the large projects, your district, other projects you may wanna do, or drainage, or whatever you wanna do with some of those monies, and you've been able to move those around some, uh, is projected to be about five point six million dollars. So you can see that, I think the chairman mentioned the other day in the budget meeting, that those were down some, projected to be down some. But that's just an overview, so.
What, your number there, Joey, this is twenty-twenty-two? I mean, this census count you're looking at is, well, twenty-twenty?
Well, we just did.
I'm just looking at what's in Walterville versus what's in Flemington, and I mean, Flemington has doubled than what Walterville has.
Well, actually, when you look at the census number, Flemington went down.
You talking about?
On the census data.
How could it have went down with, there's?
A lot of people didn't just didn't fill out the paperwork.
Two hundred new homes in there.
Well, I would say, census wise, what was reported in twenty-twenty, they lost population.
Well, now that's twenty-twenty.
Yeah.
I mean, and we know that the majority of the business, the building was done after twenty-twenty.
They missed the census then, but you gotta go by the twenty-twenty number, you can't.
But the, the census was, it wasn't done in twenty because of the pandemic, they, they just, they finished it late, didn't they?
Well, it was a little bit later.
Yeah, not a lot.
But it was, I mean, it basically, Flemington numbers came out in twenty-one, late twenty-one.
Late twenty-one.
Okay, but the census count actually occurred earlier that year.
In twenty-one?
I would think that that number is, is, is a little bit different. I mean, just me personally, I'm.
Yeah, they're all probably a little bit different.
I mean, so when you, when you start thinking about what you use other than the census, Liberty County's built in unincorporated area, we've got more folks.
To be, to be nearly four points higher, I don't, I mean, I don't understand that unless there, I, I mean, you know, you get midway sometimes, the people at the coast have a midway address, when you go to Spartina, it says something midway, so, but it's not actually in midway, it's actually in the unincorporated area.
But those are, those are just the census count numbers for.
We do by census blocks too, now.
Sure.
They count you by the census blocks where, where that census block is, so, cause that's what, who's saying that, Joey, about, cause some people that live in, at it.
Believe it was the, um.
Then Walterville have a Hinesville address, it's all over the county, all over the county.
It's from where your mail is coming from.
It's all over the county, yeah.
So that's what came out of the city's meeting, so that's, that's just an overview for all the Spartan discuss.
Uh, Ms. Chairman, I would think, and looking at this, the difference down here on the right-hand side, which I appreciate y'all putting that in there, that three point five million is ob, obviously been removed and put up front because of maybe some new project.
Mm-hmm, several.
Yep, and, um, but I do appreciate the fact that we've left a lot of these in there, um, we got to have BM from everyone to try and help get this, uh, splash passed, um, and I appreciate leaving in the Health Department.
Yes, ma'am, and, and no one, we had no objections from the, the municipalities, no doubt, they would've wanted more money, this, uh, because Flemington has, they want to build a city hall, Walterville wants to build a new city hall, and they won't build it out of what they have down here, you know, but, but they did, they brought their wish list, but no one, I give them, no one fuss about the stuff up top, the Health Department, they didn't fuss about any, they didn't fuss about the county public work, they didn't, they didn't fuss about anything on there. It was, it was more of a matter, how can we get more money to fund all the things we need, versus them not, not locking the list, no.
I, I think that the key to that is work with the commissioners. I mean, if they don't ask you for any of the help, I mean, you're, you're really intrigued, you don't, you don't, uh, I mean, we've all on this board have seen what we can do to work together, and I mean, when you get looking at the cities, they're nearly the same, same cities as there is board members up here, so, I mean, that's just part of it, is, uh, I want Flemington and Walterville to grow just as much as I want Midway and Riceburg to grow, I mean, it's, it's home, but, um, I don't know, y'all asking for a lot for the Development Authority. What is that, just, uh?
Eight hundred thousand.
Pretty much what, it was same as last time, wasn't it, Joey?
I thought it was. What do you do with that last hundred?
I thought it was a million.
They, a road.
You paved one?
Mm-hmm.
Is it in the?
It was a mi.
In the park or?
In the park, yeah.
Yeah, they extended that road.
Uh-huh.
You, you might wanna, you busy tomorrow morning?
Yes, sir.
I was gonna say, maybe.
Yeah.
Gary, what you laugh at that?
I was, um, I was, I was thinking about Eddie Murphy, something he said a couple of weeks ago.
We just laughed thinking about what he could've said.
I, I guess, Ms. Chair.
We'll do the clean version.
Yeah.
But we put this up, y'all, and, and I think I said it before, and we looked at it, and we looked at it, and the more we finally say, let's just put it down, maybe come back to it, but this is kinda what it tentatively, um, uh, is, so, but we open to suggestions for.
Adjustments.
For adjustments if you want, because.
Adjustments.
But kinda like Commissioner Pierce said, Health Department's there, and that's something we, I think we all agree that we need, we know we need the, um, public works building, you know, uh, we know we got the debt service to do, so, and then we trying to, um, was, we put a, a little bit money here, could be trying to, uh, have some skin in the game for what happens at the interchange that, at, um, I ninety-five, so, when we meet with those folk, we'll say that, you know, we not just come ask them, but we willing to at least do a little planting money or whatever into it, so, and that's, let me explain that, that's being seen as, and here's what we told the cities, and they agreed, um, if you don't, kinda like you, Commissioner, if you don't invest in yourself, you know, you won't have any dividend, so, so if we're gonna make that interchange, then that way it needs to be, working with the developer who came before us, and we gotta put a little skin in the game to help, uh, get it along, but otherwise, man, you get in a long line with DOT, it'll be the year twenty, what, twenty fifty, before something happens, so we trying to expedite anything that we can, using every resource that we can.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I just got some questions, you and Mr. Brown.
Okay.
Help me out. The eight hundred thousand, was that in the last round for the Industrial Authority? Or is that new?
Eight sixteen, one thirty-one.
Okay. The eight hundred thousand for Liberty Region, what was that previously?
L R N C East End.
About the same.
Okay. We got one million for Historical Culture, I think the last time, that, that was five hundred?
Well, we threw the extra five hundred thinking that Hinesville would need some, you know, some, something to seed money, because if that roof don't get worked on soon, that's gonna be a write-off.
Yeah.
That's why she put it there, includes Hinesville next to it.
So what percentage of this would possibly go to Hinesville?
Well, I guess you can divide that mill, maybe five hundred to Hinesville, five hundred to the Historical Cultures, which is what they had last time. But I know Commissioner Gilligan has some tentative plans for some other things, but, well, we didn't wanna leave it all to that, so we thought we set aside some funds to help. You know, I, I see it the same way we did the complex, I see it, you know. I wanna commend this commission for doing a beautiful job with salvage and that school and that, now the gymnasium, you know, complex gets used quite a lot for public functions.
Right, and I, I, I guess I, I had a few questions about that as well. I guess, uh, Commissioner Stevens kinda touched bases on it.
Come on.
Uh, recreation, the two point five, I, I know that's what it was last time as well, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And I know when we had two point five, we was budgeting also for the gymnasium, so how, how much, how much of that two point five for recreation is already kinda spoken for, or if any?
In, in this sales tax?
Right, none?
It's all gone, yeah, I mean.
I'm, I'm, no, I'm, I'm talking about.
Oh, no, no, that has.
On seven, nothing has been.
I mean, you know, the Recreation Board does their capital plan.
Right.
And then presents that to the commission for consideration of what to come out of the shoot for that two and a half.
Okay. You have them doing an assessment, don't you?
Yeah, the other thing that we've reached out to them to do is say, look, we needed you, you do an assessment of all your buildings that are on the ground, because we also have to use that money to do capital repairs.
Okay.
Well, and also on the recreation, that, um, I think some of the parks, um, still got some other stuff that need to be done, I mean, like the, the, um, down by.
Gil Park.
Yeah, for Gil Park, there was something else that was needed, um, and I'm trying to think, what, wasn't it supposed to be a tr, a walking track or something, a trail at, um, down by the Eastern Complex?
We're gonna put it out of ARPA.
Oh, out of ARPA, okay, okay.
But you're reminding me, not only are you doing new, but you maintaining what you have.
Right.
You know, cause I hear, my Commissioner Marri talked about Gunbridge hadn't had any intention.
Right.
So those people are checking roofs of provisions and everything else, so.
And I have to say, I've seen those folks out there from the rate department, about every week out there cleaning and maintaining that building, I hadn't seen that in a long time. It's, they were out there today.
Then also, uh, Ms. Brown, I, I saw you looked at me, uh, whenever, whenever you talked about it. Then also, uh, Ms. Brown, I, I saw you looked at me, uh, whenever, whenever you talked about Event Center. I, I appreciate the look.
Yeah, well, y'all were just talking about that the other day.
Uh-huh, yeah.
We got one of those though, haven't we?
You say what now?
We have one of those right here twice a month.
You, you exactly right. You exactly right. I'm, I was just trying to figure out, you know, that amount. Appreciate it, but, uh, in reality, how, how far can that go?
Planning, planning stage.
Well, yeah, if you don't get started, you, you know.
But-
Again, I, I, I appreciate it.
Yeah. And, and, you know, we have, this is a six-year span, of course, and how do I say this? Um, there, there's a lot of interests, once again, at, at the interchange, and there's interest even from developers to consider an event center. So we don't want to be caught off guard and not have our part covered if they come forward and say, well, we'll help, you know. So we want that, we want the county, all every county to be able to say, okay.
You know, we-
Oh, Ms. Chair, you, you, I mean, you, you, right, you speaking to, to the, to the choir.
Yeah. And, and, and once again, you know what-
Leave finger.
One of the good things about SPOSS funds, you able to, you know, move stuff around, so later, if you had to reshuffle, we can reshuffle, but, but we want to at least, you know, list it as an important item for, for all the community.
I, I, I-
Especially when there may be someone who want to help us with it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm all, I'm all for all, all the help as well. I, I just know it's, it's, it's been needed.
Yeah.
And I appreciate it.
Yeah.
And then I, I, I guess, we, we have to finalize this by, you were saying next month, correct?
Yeah, I actually sent, I sent this list, really along with the detailed list from the cities, the real embedded projects, because you should remember, the intergovernmental agreement has to really specify those, especially for those cities.
Right.
I sent that, and I've got a call set up next week with the attorney to get the intergovernmental agreement right.
Okay.
And Joey, and the meeting with the mayors was last week, week before?
Last week.
Last week?
Well, I know, uh, what Commissioner Fraser is talking about, and of course Joey and I have talked, and Commissioner Gillen and I have looked around, and of course, Mr. Stevens, he keeps us pushed out, but I just want to-
Y'all find y'all way then.
I just want to say that-
Back roads.
Just, just to look for a piece of property right now-
Yeah.
With water, I'm talking about, you know, not well water, but water on a municipal system, and it would probably have to be at least an acre and a half. That number right there, that's washed, that's gone. And, and that's, uh, that's what you, I mean, you're gonna have to start looking. You're gonna have to try to depend on some people that, by the chairman says, that wants to be involved.
Partner.
Um, I, I mean, you know, every community's got a, right now, except for Flemington, I mean, you've got ball fields, you've got Riceburg, you've got a little center, you got one in Heinzville, you gonna have one on Airport Road and Commissioner Thrift's area, and, I mean, we all know it. It cost, uh, you know, a lot of money, rather than when we were coming up, you just had eight wood poles stuck up in the air and with lights on it, and that's where you played ball. So, um, it's a lot of time going into it, but I think it can be done, but I'm thinking that that number right there is probably two million dollars less than what it needs to be. Now, that's just me personally.
Mm-hmm.
No, you, you're, you're exactly right.
We agree.
You are, and, and that's why I was just-
We agree.
I just, just asking a, a few questions, uh, you know, from, from that, from that standpoint, because, uh, you know, wh- whenever you dealing with inflation, you know, and just like we were just discussing earlier, even, even material wise, uh, we're definitely gonna have to, to do a lot of value engineering as well, and like you said, uh, looking at, uh, more partnerships, and also, you know, hopefully, hopefully this number is conservative like, like it was last SPOSS.
But, but what I remember, and, and when we first started talking about the event center, what that year was, it's, it's take, it's taken from then-
I, I, I could, I could tell you exactly what year, what month, uh-
It's taken from then until now for everybody to say, you know what, yeah, we really do need that.
Absolutely. And, and that's the thing, e- even you and I both know, we've had feasibility studies done-
Yeah.
On, on those particular projects, so, I mean, I'm, I'm excited, I'm eager, uh, you know, to, to see something, because, uh, you know, it's, it's definitely needed whenever we trying to create a, a community where you can live, work, and play. So I, I appreciate that being under consideration.
And of course, you know, don't forget you got chief SPOSS, you know, you still have chief SPOSS for your, for your roads and stuff.
And that's what I'm getting at. And then also, you know, whenever we looking at affe- affe- these, like, with all due respect, even with Liberty Regional and Industrial Authority, uh, you know, we, we setting aside money there and also, uh, on the millage as well. So, you know, we, we need to keep that in consideration as well.
Well, I, I, I think that the idea, the concept is, is good, um, and, you know, I'm, I might step on a few toes here, but I, I do want to say that I have been in the Midway Park. Now, Midway didn't want to participate in some of our fire services and things like that, the water issue, but I'm looking inside the Midway Park, and we've got empty buildings. I'm not talking about one or two people in it, totally empty buildings.
Right.
Now, um, you know, it's something to think of. If you want to participate and be part of our community, then we all need to try to make sure that we've got something in those buildings. Now, you know, six miles on up the road, you cross over the interstate and you're in a new park, but that building there, you know, the, just here recently, we've had the, the crepe myrtles has been cut on it and some of the grass, but I mean, the buildings, the old gift wrap is completely empty, so, um, you know, I'm not saying that I'd want to use it for a facility, but those things like that, that, you know, the chairman's asking for eight hundred thousand dollars, or not him personally, but I mean, he sits on the board, we need to be deciding what is that money gonna be used for, uh, because that, 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 those places I know have been open, I mean, they're closed down for twenty-four months, ain't they, Mr. Chairman? Two years.
You know, I, I can't confirm that for you, because-
It's been close, it's been close to that time.
It's totally empty down there?
Well, you know, we, I mean-
Midway's to- totally empty.
It's not totally empty, so.
We, we all, we all know if a, if a building is, is there, and then there's nothing in it, we know what happens to it.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's, I mean, it's just like, it just goes down all by itself.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, all by itself, I mean, there's, and I mean, there's several of them in there, several of them in there, that if nothing happens, then, um, they're just gonna go down all by themselves. Several buildings in that Midway Industrial Park. Yeah, then I did go down there a couple of weeks ago.
See, I like this.
Yeah, expect this.
I, I, I like this.
But I will say this, I'm sorry.
We, we're coming together. We, we're, we're looking at the, we're looking at the options, and, and like you said, and, and having the opportunity to, to work with, with other authorities and everything to, to, to make Liberty County better, and, and I sincerely appreciate that.
I think we always have.
Absolutely, yeah.
I can remember sitting there before you got on board, when we, when we had a man and, and, and two ladies standing out there saying they want a clean drinking water.
Right.
Cook it on the chin, we got a USDA grant.
Yeah.
And we put clean drinking water.
Absolutely.
The chairman sit there, I mean, that's the whole board working for it.
Right.
But right now, and this is my personal opinion, right now, I think we still got some other battles out here to win before we go to that. I'm not saying that it's out of the question, I'm just saying there's things that's out here with our, you know, our roads, quality of life now, you know, and after all of that's over with, with recreation, we may want to, you know, venture into that area.
Right.
And maybe by that time, we may have, uh, you know, somebody that wants to come in here and work with us, but I think the board is, I hope we have, I mean, I've, I've, I've spoke probably a little bit more than I needed to on it, but I honestly believe that we've, um, you know, we, we've got other hurdles that we're gonna have to jump over.
Right, but, but, uh, just, just like you saying, quality of life, uh, you know, it, it's a lot of different moving parts with that, you know, different, different levels, you know, different perspectives on, on what we think, or what our constituents and the citizens of Liberty County need and, and feel like important. And I, I've, I've said this plenty of times, that I, I, me personally, I think we could attack them all, you know, uh, all of them are, are equally important whenever we discuss anything about quality of life, you know. And also, whenever you talk about quality of life, we're talking about recruiting, you know, citizens here. Uh, you know, I've had conversations with, with real estate agents, you know, of course, they're, they're selling houses, they're building houses and everything else, but also, they are have to, to sell Liberty County as well. And especially when, whenever you talking about, uh, a, a family of, of four or five with young kids, you know, the, the first thing, even if the ones who, who've never stepped foot in Liberty County, first thing they're hearing, whenever they're stationed in, in Tennessee or something, hey, if you come to Fort Stewart, you know, live in Richmond Hill, without them even giving it, uh, opportunity to look at Liberty County. So, so, I mean, that, that's the narrative that we, we see and that we hear, and we're gonna have to change that narrative one way or another.
Well, they, they've got a entertainment center down there.
Yeah.
You know, the mar- the market is kind of driving that now, because I guess you ought to have heard, like I heard, we getting people moving here now from everywhere.
Right.
That's what the real estate people say, they're moving here now from everywhere. It's like, I told you, like, people have discovered us.
They have.
You know, and I asked Joey the question, I says, is MacIntyre kind of getting the same attention? He just, he said he couldn't confirm that, but, um, but I know they have, anything between Chatham and, and Liberty, they have discovered it all.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Um, and, and rooftops everywhere, uh, and I remind you again that, um, the whole thing about rooftops is good, but you need your, you know, commercial and industrial to-
To, to help.
To, to pay the bills.
That's right.
Pay the bills.
And then, you know, we, we, we need projects that's gonna bring in some type of cell tax, the same, being that we're saying that we don't have enough money, we, we also need to figure out how to weigh to, to create more money.
This tentative list was-
Let me say this, I mean, I've, yeah, I've seen and listened to everyone else, but let me say this, we can talk about the commercial, bringing in this and that, but if our infrastructure is not right, we're looking at it the round, at the round timing. We must make sure that our infrastructure is in place.
That's true.
Absolutely.
And I promise you, well, you've heard the conversation, we're looking at that. I promise you, we trying to-
I, I, I'm just saying, Ms. Kim, we must make sure that our infrastructure is in place.
That's, that's, that's a, that's a given, yeah, that's a given.
Ms. Chairman, on the, Joey, on this, if, if you would, Ms. Chairman, um, did we, um, I know, and we appreciate Kim sending us, sending us, um, this spreadsheet, um, I guess the last time we met, and I think each one of us had a chance to get on there and work on something. But where, where's the, um, the, the number for the, um, for, for the roads, is, is that?
Trouble, trouble.
Right there.
Right there? Liberty County unincorporated?
Mm-hmm.
Five, okay.
So that's one mile in six years for each commissioner.
Go be, be, be less than that. So, so-
Three quarters of a mile.
This is, this is the new chart, this is the old chart.
Mm-hmm.
So you're actually down by-
Down by.
Mm-hmm. But, but the, um, the, the, the cities have, I mean, like, yeah, yeah, but, but they, but they're getting something. The, the thing about it, the, the, the cities, um, my, my district, uh, District Five, the new district, all, all I have is cities now. I don't have no unincorporated, no, nothing. I got, um, I think all the Allenhurst, or the majority of Allenhurst, good pit of, bit of Waltherville, not as much as I had, and maybe some different parts of Heinzville, probably the same, you know, maybe the same population, but I, I don't have any unincorporated, so, um, I'm looking at Allenhurst, that's two hundred and eight thousand.
Mm-hmm.
And Flemington has-
Two hundred and fifty-two.
Flemington has less than Allenhurst? Is that, no, there's three hun-
It would be the one on-
Oh, okay, just a little bit more than Allenhurst. And that's, and, and we basing that on population, Joey, is what you're saying?
That is what census is based on right now.
Man.
That's from the left side.
Mm-hmm. And, and I remind you, uh, uh, like, they brought the wish list, and Flemington wanted to build a city hall. Flemington? But that's what they're not gonna do, yeah. You know, can we tell them, bring, bring your list, and what we, what we did, they wrote the list, but we listed the, Joey Colton, tier one projects, or the, or the county by projects up top, then, okay, here's what's left, guys. So by the time we got through with all the stuff up top, there wasn't the funds, uh, to go to the bottom to, for them to do, uh, some of the things they want to do, so they gonna have to adjust. And I asked them, because I really didn't know, I met, you all met them, I said, well, how do you guys, what's, what's your major revenue producer? It says water.
What, what percentage did they say? A high percentage?
They did say, and that's what happens in a smaller city.
Yeah.
Midway, Walderville, Riceburg, their water and sewer bills contribute to the general fund.
Yeah.
And, and so, it happens that way in Heinzville too.
Yeah.
But-
It's a five and a fourth to-
Getting their water from Heinzville.
Brings very little.
They're getting their water from Heinzville.
From Flemington?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And their sewer.
Uh-huh.
Is coming from Heinzville.
Yeah, but, you know, of course, they-
And their garbage is getting picked up by Liberty County, and their streets is getting picked by Liberty County, so.
But those water sales are what brings in their revenue.
Well, right, and that, I think the reason for that is, is-
One sixty-four.
Well, yeah, it helps, yeah.
Yeah. But you got, um-
And they get your own fines and forfeits. One sixty-four, yeah.
Yeah, that, I bet that's a whole lot.
Where, where was it?
But they, but they were clear, water was it, water's the number one revenue producer.
I could see where it would be now because of the influx in housing now.
Right, right.
You figure two years ago, that wasn't probably their chief.
But Paul's very clear to say that the city's outgrown, that is a revenue source.
Outgrown the-
Water, using waters, mhm, but they've-
Kim, you said that-
At the crossroads.
Flemington gets fines and forfeits?
They get-
They got a police force.
Sheriff.
They get the ticket revenue that he generates in that-
Not very much.
For, for the deputy that's contracted, so if he don't write in, they, they, they don't-
They don't get anything.
Yeah. Because I know that from behind Parkers to, to Fort Stewart, it's, I mean, because eighty-four has got, um, the competition's got to be pretty fierce out there between the sheriff and the state patrol, and, you know, you know, just from Dairy, from Dairy Queen to, to the high school, that's the city, and then you got that one road that goes toward Fort Stewart.
That's it, basically.
Yeah, okay. Well, you, you got Joseph Martin and all that, I guess, yeah, okay, all right. Okay.
All right, so this, and you know, the coroner made, and he and Commissioner Stevens went on there, what you call it? A, a tour to look at facilities for coroner, but, but we don't have any funds set aside, I mean, there just wasn't any room. Uh, I don't know, I'm not sure if we had even a, did we have even an approximate amount, what it would cost to build? I don't remember, guy. Facility for-
Facility.
Yeah.
Uh, no, but we have, we've, we've gone back and looked at two more, one more since then, but I did not get a cost on it.
Yeah.
Mr. Brown, he didn't-
Yeah, and the jail, y'all know the jail was a big ticket item, we, it would take all this by itself.
Right, yeah. And, and then also, can, can we change that recreation to parks and recreation, instead of just recreation?
Sure.
That's just a-
Change right now, I got a feeling.
A what? Look at that, look at, you call that technology?
Okay.
Hey, I didn't even get any kickback.
No, a lot, a lot of people call it that.
Right.
Other cities, they call it that.
I'd like to see if God will let me work, trying to get these smaller.
Sure, we can.
Get you back closer to where you work.
Which, yeah, I was gonna say that. That, what's out of our goal, y'all, trying to get at least back to what it was?
That's, that's my goal too.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Joey.
Trying to get those small?
I try, I, I wanna try to get you back to what you are.
Differences. With both. Yeah.
That you don't lose road money. The, um, of course, you use that money for other stuff, too. I was looking at Kim on the, please don't say anything, I know you're gonna do it on the sales spreadsheet, my number is about five dollars off.
She'll find it.
Look, on average.
She'll find it.
Based on, if we collect only fifty-eight million in sales tax six, you, you'll generate an extra sixty-eight thousand dollars roughly per district. Based on just percentage stuff, and in the T-splash, if you collect, uh, fi- just fifty-eight million there, which is a longer running program, you're gonna generate, uh, an extra one hundred and fifty-four per district. So those two combined will give you some extra road funds, just because the tax is good, if it stays up, if it stays up.
Well, if you look at.
Very, very good point about the recession and some of that stuff, so.
Uh, if you look at road money right now, I'm just saying the District One touches, uh, what, Riceboro, Midway, Hinesville, and Walthalville, correct?
Yeah.
So you, you want me to work on getting everybody's up at District One, cause you're gonna try to work with the others, is that what you?
I think that's what I heard.
No, I'm just.
They normally don't.
I mean, I'm just making it being noted that.
It's duly noted.
The commissioner touching four, four, four other cities.
Duly noted, and then, uh, of, of course, again, like, like what we have done in the past, we've worked together. And then also, you know, we still have to sit down and, and negotiate, uh, our splits as well with commission, and I, I think that we're all willing to, to consider.
Well, we did, we did do that.
We, we, we did that last time, and we have to do it again this time.
Well, I, I, I know that, um, every road that I pave, Commissioner Stevens, and I thought that's what we saw out of eye, you know, that, that. And, but, but just to make sure that we see out of eye on this one, I'm already gonna give him every dime I got.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Commissioner Stevens, hold on.
No, no, but, but, um, I, you, you know, when, when you, when you think about it, you know, when, when you think about what, what we've had done, we've done with the, the money allocated.
Yeah.
Then, and then, uh, a project comes up, and I think, you know, then we, we say, okay, we'll do this. I think, just, just kinda out of the blue, um, all of us love Sam Harris, you know, so we, so we did something there. Uh, Miller Park comes up, you know, we, we, we moved and shake, shook around a little bit, and, and we did that, then we, um, uh, the Parkout, Krebs Park, I think, what they call it, you know, that, that came, I mean, you, you know, so we, 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 we moved some stuff around and, uh.
It was in the pudding.
Yeah, and, and, you know, so, uh, you could've put it all over here, but everybody had it, and when it came up, everybody chipped in. And, you know, I, I mean, I ride around it, and I, I, I see a lot of projects throughout the whole county. I mean, I was right down across from, from my office, um, Commissioner Frazier's has done some, some, some great work over in, um, in, in his district. Um, you know, you, I went down to the Riceboro to, to Midway today, and I saw, um, all that, those covers and all that work that's beginning to get started at, um, um, at, at Miller Park. And, and then, you know, let's just say here, in the last, don't know how many years, I think, uh, maybe four or five years, maybe a little longer, we built the, the fire station. I mean, you know, we, we, uh, Gun Branch, I think, was the first one to come online, and now we got two, or, you know, one or two more, and, you know, and we, the, the East End complex, it, it's, you know, some, somebody may say, well, you know, Hinesville get all the money. There's been a lot of activity on the other side of that overpass, a whole lot of activity.
A whole lot of activity.
It, it may not be a, a dirt road.
That's right.
But there's been some money spent on the other end of, um, across that railroad track. I mean, a whole lot of money's been spent over there, so, um, and, and, and we have it, and then when something comes up, we, we, we work out a way to do it, from, from somewhere, by, by hook or crook, as they say, but, but we, we, we get it done some kind of way. And it's, I mean, the, the whole county has seen some, some movement.
Commissioner Gillip, don't, don't, don't forget, you missed a little small project at the Bri Bay Park, the water issue. And it used to rain, it would cover the path.
Mm-hmm.
Where we was at the other day.
Mm-hmm.
Now you don't have that issue down there no more.
Mm-hmm.
The, they have improved the water drainage, and I think all of that came out of money like, like this also.
Right.
Small project, but.
We, we.
It's working now.
Working together.
It is working.
We're working together. Right.
Yeah.
We're moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Gillip, for saying.
I heard the plug.
Commissioner Stevens, we have spent a whole, we have spent a lot of money across the.
Oh, yeah, I'm.
Across MacIntyre's mountain.
I mean, we still gonna go.
We've spent a lot of money.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, we.
Yeah.
That's right.
In fact, most of our parks are.
In your district. There's a lot going on in your district.
Yeah.
I think we.
Can't forget about Gun Branch, neither.
No, I got a road on, on the table.
Yeah.
I got a road.
I think the next project that we're gonna have to do in this county is, is gonna be water on the west.
And Gun Branch.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we, we, we were just talking about it over here.
And they're getting ready to build a subdivision out there, out that way. What, 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 did somebody say something about building?
Just did say.
The housing development, I think, is supposed to be coming out, out that way.
It's just a, there's. Grover, yeah, I think there's like.
I mean, not, not a real big one, but, but one nonetheless, you know?
What y'all just do, Joey?
I just changed facility to facility.
Okay.
Getting rid some funds to help do that other two.
Alright, well, y'all, let's, let's let Joey do his, I don't wanna say magic. Tweaking with the bottom, just try to get those, go back down, scroll down, get those, give us this less.
Yeah, if, yeah, do, do what you need to do, Joey, to, to, to take that red out of there, and, and, um, and, and, um, you know, where, wherever it comes from, you know, we, we, we just have to deal with it, but, um, we, we, I don't think that we need to, um, short any, um, municipality.
I don't think so either.
You know, es- especially when we sit right here and we just talk about how the cost of everything is going up, and then we gonna say, yes, going up, but by the way, here's less.
And Commissioner Thiff said a good.
Come close, I think, yeah, I think I can come.
Commissioner Thiff said a, a good statement, Commissioner Gillip, say it again, they've been.
The municipalities, municipalities have been working with us very well.
Yeah.
Good, they've been good, good for us right here.
Cause I promise you, they did not fight anything the county had up there.
I mean, cause, I mean, honestly, all, all the projects benefit everyone.
They do.
I, I, I think, and, and just like what Commissioner Walter was talking about, the quality of life. Me personally, I, I think every last one of those projects, uh, countywide projects addresses quality of life, you know, from, from public safety to, to, you know, to recreation, to, to event center or, or whatnot, all of that contributes to, to the overall quality of life.
What, and you know, and sitting right at that podium, we, we, we had a lot of requests come in.
Ooh.
Uh, I mean, a, a whole lot of requests, uh, you know, and, uh, this is, as, um, I mean, the, the community is growing, um, you know, we had requests for, from the coroner, first time ever, that, that Reggie came in, um, you know, with, with, um, with, with a request. And, um, the, the voters, uh, registration.
Registration.
Um, the health department, I mean, you know, all, all of these things that, um, that, that we got to be creative in some kind of way.
Find a way.
Get, 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 get it done, you know?
You must think if it wasn't for splash, we couldn't do.
No.
We couldn't do none of these things that we're doing.
How, how long will, remind me, I, cause I always get ARPA and the other fund mixed up. ARPA is the continuing?
ARPA has to be having its money split by twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three.
Mm-hmm.
And we.
Twenty twenty-four, right, so all the projects have to be obligated by twenty twenty-three.
Alright, and we've gotten all the ARPA money?
Six and two, be able to draw down the second phase of it now.
Okay.
What's the amount left right now, Mr. Brown? What's the amount left right, on ARPA money, just roughly?
About a hundred grand, wasn't it?
Yeah, we received a little over five million in the first, we, we get a total of eleven point nine. And I think we received a little over five million in the first cut, and we spent probably about one point three.
Right, right, no.
Somewhere a little over a million, maybe.
And then we've got some obligated for some of those ongoing projects, remember some was put in, fire station. Yeah, fire station and, uh, EMS station.
So once again, like Commissioner Gillip said, we're doing great things, you know, we just don't give ourselves credit sometimes for, for, for what we're doing.
I think it's just the cost, the, 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 the cost of everything is eating us.
It, 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 it's hard to project.
And I did not expect, you know, as it is, we work on your budget and you, like, like running house, I didn't expect elections to come and say, we need a new facility. That wasn't on my radar, you know, but do they need it? Yeah, they need it.
Yeah, they, they need it.
It's already voting.
That's why we gotta do this call, is, Mr. Chairman, McCuyver would say, forward thinking.
Mm-hmm.
That's where we gotta look, we gotta look at the water.
Yeah.
We gotta, we're gonna have to look and, and see where we can somewhere, I don't know when the time will come, but it won't be long, where we're gonna have to have our own well, another one. And I know with the withdrawal stuff, but I'm sure we can get some type of special permit. But we also need to see about where it ties in to the city of Riceboro. Where can we tie into the city of Hinesville? Because, I mean, that's gonna be the lifeline one day. Um, some people see it already, but those are things that's coming down the road for our community to continue to grow. Uh, I mean, roads, recreation and things like that, but I mean, right now, a person, if you don't have clean drinking water.
Water you'd have hurt.
We're, we're in a, we're in a world, and, um.
I know it's a sensitive subject, but, um, in reality, to be able to loop all those well systems together, be what you need to do countywide. Have a countywide water system and a countywide water authority that runs that system.
We can talk about that at the countywide planning workshop, then, you know?
Yeah.
If you don't ever start the discussion, you'll never get there.
You know, others have done it, you can divide it up, and then you.
Yeah, it may take five years, but let the five years start today.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Let me say this, and I'll be, you know, how the water system got started on the East End was, had two ladies down there, they rode bicycles up and down that area. And a lot of people thinking, what's wrong with them? They gonna look for sign, sign this for clean drinking water? They were the Latson ladies, there was two sisters, they rode bicycles. And we had a pastor at Thieves Amy Church, Reverend Charlie Fogel. That night, Mr. Brown, if you remember, he said, Brother Steven, get us on the agenda, I'm coming up, he said, I'll do it, I'll represent, I said, well, I'm here, he said, let me do it. Reverend Charlie Fogel was, was actually from Savannah, Georgia.
Mm-hmm.
He came right there and stood up and asked for clean drinking water. And that's how it actually got started, but we didn't have that project on the table, I think, when we got some, what, stipend money? We got some money to come through.
You'd at least do the initial design or.
Stimulus money, and we had a design on the table, and it took off. So if we don't start thinking about this, and imagine if we have to do the drawing and put it on the table and wait, we won't never get there.
You'll never get there.
Use is, your water system stuff's a hundred percent funded.
Yeah, right.
No loan.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a, it's gonna require, uh, a different way of thinking, but everybody from Liberty County, unincorporated, all the way down to Walthalville, the, the, the leadership.
Mm-hmm.
The elected leadership of everybody in, in, in this county.
Yes, sir.
To make this thing work, because we could sit here and, and we may, you know, kind of, you know, go back and forth with some things. But, uh, but when it comes down to it, we, we get together and, and, and we make it work. And if, uh, if looping a, a water system is gonna be, is the way to go.
Right.
You, you, you can't have people sitting there, um, like the kids in the sandbox, like, th- th- this is mine.
Mm-hmm.
And, cause if, if they have that mindset, if they have that mindset, then, then, then you're not gonna grow, and, and that will be all you have, is, is, is what's, what's in your sandbox, that'd be all you have. You know, I, I could go back and, I know this is live, but, you, you know, we, um, that, there's, uh, some reluctance, see, to, to, to not wanna grow.
Mm-hmm.
By, by, by some of the smaller municipalities, I mean, you know, we, man comes in and build three or four brand new, three or four hundred brand new houses, we don't want them. You know, so we take them on the county. Why wouldn't you want them? Why, why wouldn't you, you want them? Why, why wouldn't you wanna grow? Cause if you get that, then eventually you may get a, a supermarket. Eventually, you, you might, but, but you're not gonna get it, if, if, if you don't want it.
If you're selfish.
So you just sat right there, and, and, and you got, um, twenty twenty-two, and you got, um, a major inventory of dirt roads, and nothing.
Guarantee.
And, and you, ain't nobody going down there, I'm not moving on no dirt road.
No, and I tell you, what Commissioner Thiff's area is at, that's your next dirt. I mean, that's the next dirt, any way you look at it.
Absolutely.
That's true.
It's coming.
Yeah, it's coming.
It's coming.
Before we leave after the, what was the previous tax, was it fifty-four me?
Yeah.
Forty-four me, and so we increased it roughly to that sixty-nine?
She wouldn't round it up for me.
Just one more?
I'm cautiously optimistic, but, you know, there's always a chance. I mean, we keep hearing recession, recession, recession. I don't feel like it's hit us yet. I mean, I feel the inflation.
Right, yeah.
But I don't feel, you know, people haven't stopped buying.
Right.
And the rail tax is still coming in very well, to say that we can sustain, you know, double-digit growth every year, I'm, I, I don't agree with, but if we end up at, you know, sixty thousand, you know, six, six million over what we originally budgeted, no.
Then we still, we can, we still, uh, give each one percentage of.
Right, because it's all about, about percentages.
Okay.
And, and if we, and if we don't make the sixty-nine, everybody.
Has to, has to adjust.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
With that in mind, that's, I was just thinking, one of the adjustments I'd like to try to make, come back down again to those that haven't got any allocation. Uh, it, it would be good to put a placeholder in here, so the project is identified, so then later on, you wanna redistribute some money.
That's a good, that's a good idea.
If you collect extra money and you wanna get together, let's, let's put fifty thousand over here on the jail or on the coroner's thing.
Good idea.
And it'll be an eligible activity to use those money.
That's a good idea.
Flexibility, I think we need to try to.
Good idea.
Some amount.
Something, yeah. Okay, same thing for the coroner.
Corner side.
I, I believe so, yeah, I think we'll have to plug some in both of them.
Mm-hmm. Good idea.
Getting any cheaper.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright. Pre- Commissioners.
In fact, we've got a meeting with the city scheduled to relook at this on June first, so it'll be before your meeting, and maybe we'll show them. Actually, I'll pop something out to y'all, and then we can check. Y'all party same.
Commissioners, I, you know, and just like I told the citizens, ma'am, I appreciate you all for your cordiality, I appreciate you all. Uh, with your teamwork approach to this, um, Commissioner Gillip is right, we all gotta be invested. It's not just about what happens in unincorporate, what happens Liberty County-wide, that's gonna make the difference in our county, so we gotta position ourselves for, for growth and for progress, and for proceeds. If you don't invest in yourself, who will? Who will? So, appreciate y'all, um, taking a good look at this. And a little something for everybody, once, you know, if, if Mr. Brown's able to go back and at least restore some of that, who said to raise some of the red?
Yeah, yeah. Hopefully break some of it, make, make it less.
Yes, you have the small cities out, cause they're, you're right, they, they, they're right there with us, right there with us. We will have done a great thing, so thank you again.
Alright, and, and Ms. Chairman, before we leave, I, I just wanna tell you that, that you, you, you did a wonderful job earlier today.
Thank you, sir.
Right, with, with, with your speech to
Yeah.
to the Joseph Martin Elementary School fifth graders.
Yeah, we had a good.
Where they had graduation.
Had graduation, yeah.
Yeah, had a good time over there. His son introduced me.
I had a fifth grader, now I have a sixth grader.
He better watch out, his son is pretty good.
Yeah, he's, man, he's, he's, right.
Won several awards.
Yeah, 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 he, he, you know, he, he, he wants to be a scientist, so, I mean.
Daddy better step up his game.
I'm telling you, I'm telling you, so, but, uh.
Thank you, sir, I enjoyed that job, enjoyed that. Alright, they have the keys.
I, I, I would like to, uh, say, you know, this, uh, in, in closing here, just to remind you that we, we are having the walk, uh, this weekend, uh, if you can make it, I know there's a lot going on, graduation.